This conference will now be recorded.
The United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, may I please have roll call?
Councilmember Fox.
Absent and excused.
Councilmember Casper.
I am here.
Councilmember Boyle.
Present.
Councilmember Leha.
Here.
Councilmember Servini.
Present.
Mayor Strobin.
Here.
Thank you, clerk. Can we please call up any public comments from the audience?
Al Philla.
Al Philla, 36016 Northwest Jenny Creek Road. A few months back, when they raised the speed limit coming into town, I thought it was a silly thing to do. Well, now several months later, I still think it's a silly thing to do. And then, lo and behold, we got, used to have two 50 mile an hour speed limit signs going out of town. Now we got three. So in a mile and a half, you got three 50 mile an hour speed limits. And you know, I just like people to slow down. All right. Now, now we're on the signs. And this, I'm way getting way down on my list of things. But, you know, Stone Creek Avenue out here, you know, that's two words, Stone Creek. Well, on the sign there, and it's been that way for a long time, it says Stone Creek, you know, there's no capital C, you know, and also John Storm out by the library, you know, it's John Storm, you know, no, no capital S, just all run together, you know. And, you know, I, I don't know. It just, I guess I'm a stickler, I guess. But anyway. And, oh, the last thing is, is in signings, you know, this last summer, especially down here at Stern Wheeler Park, there were more people drinking than smoking cigarettes than I've seen in a long time, you know, and I, I worried about that. And I would say, well, are there, are there any signs saying no alcohol, no, no smoking cigarettes? And I said, I don't know. And so I looked around, and there aren't any down here that I could find. And the only one I could find up in Holly Park was over by the skate park there. And it's right there where all the beer cranks are, under the bushes there, you know, so, and I've mentioned that before. Uh, I went to a veterans ceremony at Fort Vancouver High School on Thursday last week. And that, that was a big, because that was auction day, I missed the auctions going out of Woodland. Anyway, they read off the Gold Star names during the ceremony. And last week, I read off four, or last meeting, I read off four. They read off 58, you know, and that was, that was really touching. Well, God bless America.
Al, for clarification, are, is it the green street signs that don't have the capital letters? What signs for Stone Creek and?
The neighborhood. The neighborhood sign, the one that's, the neighborhood's responsible for.
Okay, the neighborhood. Okay, okay, okay.
We'll give you the address of the HOA so you can.
Well, I'm still confused. I think he's talking about the street sign. The green street sign.
All right. Well, we'll make note of that. Yes, Al, you're definitely digging in deep there, right? It's the end of the year. We're at the bottom of that list, finally. It's okay. We still love you, Al. Any other comments from the audience, clerk?
Kimberly Goheen Elban.
Kimberly, if you want to come here real quick, I already gave this out to the other veterans. That's that pen for you.
Kimberly Goheen Elban, life citizen of Clark County, Washington, USA. I'm going to speak a little bit, do some reporting about the Clark County council meetings that I've been going to since we have two weeks here between us. Lots been happening. First Amendment rights violated on record. Finally, there's a few people that actually, when they, I said, yeah, they violated my First Amendment rights. He said, no, they not only violated yours, they violated mine. Clark County had CVTV turn the TV off, no recordings. And frankly, say I went berserk or something, wouldn't you want it recorded? Wouldn't you want to see that as the public? I think so. You know, there's the good, the bad, the ugly about that one. So as far as your battleground courts interlocal, I am concerned as to, about the jurisdiction, about all that, but I'm not going to go too, too much into that. But using harder tax dollars to who knows how many interpretives, there's, it mentions interpreters. So I've been witness to at least eight over the last four months in, in court, myself in Kelso and in Clark County. And believe me, there's languages out there I don't even understand, but they're using hard earned tax dollars to have those interpreters. So when this must stop and this, and if you are illegals here that are incarcerated, they must be deported. And look forward to President Trump to fulfill his promise to deport, as the 34 million plus illegals are depleting our already depleted resources. As for appointing any judges, I tell them to follow the Constitution, their oath to the people, and do not follow the corruption here in the Clark County court system, but begin to clean up as a new government is going to be taking in control. I have a personal, you know, thing there with the courts and stuff with my son. And I can say that I am witness to corruption from Superior Court and District Court judges. And the judge at the top of that corruption list is Inslee's appointed Supreme Justice Raquel Montoya Lewis. She took my son's God given parental rights away, knowing there was fabricated evidence against him and used it. That time will come. So one of the fruits of the spirits is patience. I'm asking that we have a town hall and absolutely put up their growth or no growth. Have it on a meeting that maybe is on an opposite Wednesday, or have it in a meeting here? We need people here. One of my main things is to wake up people, and we need more people here. And I do appreciate those that are here. As far as your state legislation, legislators are not elected. They do not have your best interest. We are now going to have a new government very soon. And I'm warning you, when this city here is involved in the Association of Cities or in the GMA, it does not follow the Constitution or nor cares about the public itself.
Thank you, Kimberly. Appreciate it.
I would like to extend one more and ask one more for very quick information that Mr. Ins, excuse me, Greg Kimsey, the auditor, put this out on voting day. There was over a hundred of stacks in the election office. When I went in, I was about 15 minutes inside the building, was going to come out and get one of these. There was two left. I got one. I was accused of stealing it. I paid for this. What it is, is this, though. Mr. Kimsey had put out propaganda, and he used the RCW to do people. So me, knowing my rights, I looked up the RCW, and in no way does it say, I could not wear my Trump hat. He wanted me to not take it off. He said he'd have me arrested 100 feet away from the election building. And I knew my rights, so I wore my Trump hat. He eventually came up to me again near the building, and I have it videotaped, that he actually bribed me to give me a new ballot, a new sleeve, and a ballot envelope to go somewhere else to vote.
Thank you, Kimberly. Appreciate it. Clerk, are there any other public comments to be called up?
No more public comments to be called up.
Anybody calling in, please press star six to unmute yourself. State your name and address for the record. Clerk, do we have anybody online?
Nobody is unmuting. So I believe there are no public comments on the phone.
Okay. Any public comments to be read?
Yes, there's one public comment to be read. Nelda Perryman. I was looking over the entries for accounts payable and saw that the city spends an average of $2,500 per month for training. Would it be possible to get an explanation as to what types of training these expenditures cover? Thank you.
Yes, of course, Nelda. We'll have Maria and Tracy reach out to you so you can hear what people are getting trained for. We don't have the list on us, Kimberly. And it's, you have the entire list of what we've been trained for? Oh, yeah, yeah. No, we don't have a list on us right here handy. So it's, it's something that we can reach out to. And if needs be, we can post it on, on the website. There is, there is transparency here. So there is nothing hidden at all. You just got to ask the questions that you need to have answered, because we can't think of everything that you guys are thinking of, right? It's just, it's impossible.
Can we post it in the minutes for this meeting to be approved next meeting?
So we, I know that in my staff reports, I list all the trainings that staff attends. And I think that Tracy does similar. If we start, if we then actually want copies of receipts and stuff like that, then we're going into a public records request. And it, it will cost for a public records request for us to dig in and, and I get those, get those answers. But I know as far as my staff goes, all of those trainings are listed on a monthly basis. Yeah.
Yeah. In fact, actually, Maria reads them out loud each month, any of the trainings or even conventions or seminars that they attend.
Tracy is going to comment, I think.
Tracy, are you there?
Or you're going to mute yourself.
Yeah, no, I am. I just wanted to share that I do read the trainings that we go through as well, and our staff minutes when we report on that. Every, all the trainings that we do are mandatory trainings that are required by the state, like for CDL or certification, CPR, first aid, all that. So that's what they're in reference to. But we can, we can give a list of those if they're needed.
Yeah, I, I think a list would be good to at least answer these questions. I don't think it's something that needs to be posted on the website every single time, because of the amount of time it does take. So if we're still reading them out as public announcements during the reports, I think that's sufficient. Thank you, Tracy. Thank you, Maria. Clerk, are there any other public comments to be read?
No more public comments to be read.
Perfect. Thank you very much. That moves on to the consent agenda. If there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Then moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Thank you, council. And you guys did read through that, right? All the consent agenda? Yes, all right. Oh, yes, Ms. Hannah. Hannah, are you with us? Oh, no, not the other Hannah. Sorry, Hannah, you're number two. Yeah, the other Hannah. All right. So tonight, we do have a present, presentation. It's the 2025 State Legislative Priorities Update. Ms. Hannah Jones will be presenting. Hannah, it's all yours.
Hi, good evening, everyone. And I, would you like me to screen share, or do you guys have my presentation up?
We're screen sharing here. If you can just tell me when to advance the slides.
Okay, perfect. Sounds good. And good evening. It's good to be with you all. I think the last time I saw you was when we, when I came to give the post-session report. So it's been a few months, but, but glad to see you all. And we're excited to brief you on what to expect for the coming legislative session. And I'm excited to get back to work down in Olympia advocating for the city. For those I don't know, my name is Hannah Jones, and I am your contract lobbyist. I work for the firm Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Relations. Next slide, please. And tonight, we're going to walk through a few different things. Oh, I think that was two slides. And we're going to walk through a couple of items. And the first is, I want to just go over, explain the way that we, GTH, works with the city, and how we are working for you in Olympia. Next, I'm going to go over the expectations for the 2025 legislative session. I'll talk about the city's priorities. And then we'll walk through next steps and what you can expect between now and the start of session on January 13. So starting first with the, the partnership between GTH and the city of La Center. And so here are all of the things that we do on your behalf and more. And first, I'll share that as a firm, the way that we serve our clients is we focus on a return on investment. And so as I mentioned, when I was last before this council in 2024, we shared some of those highlights and how we, we demonstrated return on investment for the city. That includes supporting the city through requesting funds from the legislature. You all have a fantastic delegation in the, in the 20th Legislative District, and they delivered for the city by securing $250,000 for the La Center Community Center. In addition, $1 million was secured for the Pacific Shared Use Path. With the recent election results and the failure of Initiative 2117, the city is going to be eligible to receive these funds on January 1, 2025. In addition to what we did in 2024, we got right to work and started working to help create more understanding with your legislative delegation in terms of familiarity with the city and of some of the maybe challenges that you all are facing in La Center. And so we conducted in-person tours, an in-person tour of the city of La Center with Representative Peter O'Barno and Representative Ed Orkut in July and August. And during that time, we shared them, shared with them some of our ideas going into the 2025 legislative session on, on the city's behalf, so that they're well aware and prepared for what we're going to be talking about when we meet with them here in a couple of weeks. I also worked with the mayor and provided some strategic advice and recommendations in the process to develop a comprehensive 2025 legislative agenda. And I'll explain in a, in a few slides about what goes into that process. We facilitate discussions and help with relationship building with the city's legislative delegation during the legislative session and periodically in the interim. I provide reports to the city that share what's going on in Olympia during session, and maybe what legislators and the state are working on during the, during the interim months as well. And finally, I provide daily on the ground representation on the city's behalf during session. This includes, of course, regular reports, regular communication, in addition to tracking the literal hundreds of bills that the legislature introduces and reporting back to the city if there's an interest in weighing in on any of those bills. Next slide, please. Okay, so I'm going to share just a high level overview of what's, what the political climate is in the state, just to set the stage for what we can expect in 2025. We are expecting significant political, or significant turnover in the House of Representatives and in the Senate. This year, just in the general election last week, all House members and half of the state senate were up for reelection. Many chose not to seek reelection, whether because they were retiring. Some House members moved to the Senate, and other members still ran for higher office. And so we're likely to see many new faces down in Olympia. We also know that Democrats are vying for 60% majority in each caucus in the election. I just received notification this, this evening that officially, the, the state senate seat in the 18th Legislative District has gone to Democrats, giving them 30 seat, giving Democrats 30 seats, to Republicans 19 seats in the chamber. In the House, Democrats have picked up one seat in the, in the 26th Legislative District. So what we'll see there is that Democrats are largely controlling the political agenda in, in January and throughout the legislative session. We also know that we saw a new, we will see a new governor take the administration. Governor-elect Ferguson will be moving in to the governor's mansion in, starting in January. And we will see significant turnover at state executive agencies as well. In November, we saw three initiatives to the legislature on the ballot. All of them were rejected. That included repealing, repealing the climate, the state's Climate Commitment Act, the capital gains tax, and making the long-term care program optional. The people rejected all three of those initiatives. And so all three of those programs and/or legislations remain intact. One initiative to the people was on the ballot, and that based on initial election results appears to be approved. And that is repealing legislation that the legislature enacted during the 2024 legislative session regarding the use of natural gas in commercial and residential settings. Finally, as I noted earlier, many legislators are running for executive offices. And if they win, an appointment process by the local party must follow. So we are looking between now and January at seeing what that appointment process looks like. So we will see still additional, additional new faces in, in, in the Senate and in the House. Next slide, please. And all three members of the 20th Legislative District won their elections and will retain their seats, which that's wonderful news. I will say, we've spent a great deal of time with your legislative delegation, and they are wonderful advocates on behalf of the city. So excited to be working with them again this coming session. And then, as I mentioned, voters rejected two initiatives that would have had major budgetary impacts. However, shortfalls remain in this operating and transportation budgets. And as a result of this, legislators are telling stakeholders that this means the capital budget may be smaller than in prior years. And then session begins January 13, and it's going to last for 105 days. It's expected to conclude April 28. 2025 is the first year in the biennium or two-year fiscal cycle. During this time, over the course of the 105 days beginning January 13, legislators are going to be debating new policy. They will be adopting biennial capital, operating, and transportation budgets. And all bills must be introduced anew at the start of the legislative session. We'll actually see some bills prefiled in December. And all bills will be assigned new numbers. Next slide, please. And in addition, some, some budget context here. So the, the June 2024 revenue forecast projected a decrease of $5 million in the current operating budget biennium. We also know that the transportation budget continues to be strained, constrained because of declining gas tax revenues. And so the legislature is discussing the potential for a package with some larger investments for cost overruns for larger projects, culverts. There's a major obligation to fund about four or so billion dollars in culverts, and other large maintenance and operations, maintenance and preservation projects across the state. And so as I mentioned, capital budget is not expected to increase in size like it may have in recent years. Next slide, please. So this is just a quick timeline of what you, what can be expected here largely throughout December. We are going to see House and Senate committees reorganize because there are new members, because it's a new biennium. Sometimes committee portfolios are changed. New members are appointed to different committees. And the caucuses for each chamber will elect new leadership for each committee. So chairs, vice chairs, ranking members, et cetera. We will also see bills filed, prefiled beginning in, in early December, where we'll start to see what, we'll, we'll start to get a preview of what some of the policy agenda items will be for the coming session. The second week of December, the ninth through the 10th, is the House will be almost in full assembly in Olympia. You'll have new members and members who may be retiring all in one place, participating in work sessions, talking about what some of the policy issues they may take up are for the coming session. On December 11, we'll see joint committee meetings. There are some rumors maybe that the governor's budget might be released that day. The, on, later that week, we'll see the Senate do the same as the House. They'll convene in their committees. And then January 13 will be the first day of session. We'll see new members sworn in, and we'll see a transition to the new governor-elect Ferguson's administration. Next slide, please. And wanted, I'm just going to go very quickly through some emergency, some emergence, emerging policy issues as they relate to local governments. We may see some Public Records Act legislation to help protect city employees involved in lawsuits. And we are likely to see the property tax cap lift bill back this coming session. This was, has been proposed for the last few years in Olympia, which would have revised the outdated 1% property tax cap and instead tied the cap to inflation for local governments, and they would be able to leverage up to 3%. There, there has been a lot of interest from local government community on that. And so we are likely to see that, that bill back again. In addition, there are a few, a couple of issues trending relating to indigent defense, public defense caseload standards. The Supreme Court is considering changing the way in which public defender caseload, caseloads are determined, which could have a significant impact in, in budget in terms of how many public defenders cities must fund. Next slide, please. And another bill here would be regarding establishing an office of independent prosecutions within the Attorney General's Office to oversee investigations regarding whether law enforcement officers are, should be prosecuted for use of deadly force. I've also just got a couple of sections here on the operating budget and the transportation budget. As, as I mentioned, there is definitely going to be some conversation about budgets and the major shortfalls that the legislature is facing in each, in each operating and transportation budget. For the operating budget, that funds K-12 education, childcare, and more. With the economic revenue forecast coming in as low as it has, we will wait to see another forecast before the session begins. But Democrats are likely to consider conversations about how to fill this hole, simply to maintain existing programs. From what I've heard from many budget leaders, they're saying we, we're not looking at new programs this year. It's all about filling the hole so we can just maintain the work that the state is doing presently. And for transportation, there, this has been coming on for a few years. There have been some conversations about replacing or supplementing the gas tax in order to make sure that we're able to fund maintenance and preservation on our roads, as well as other functions of the transportation budget. And so there have been conversations about instituting a road usage charge for electric vehicles, hybrids, or new vehicles. Heard earlier this week from the Transportation Budget Chair that there is more consideration being given to that policy proposal this coming session. And there may still be other, other revenue generating proposals being considered by the body. Next slide, please. And transitioning from what to expect, the, the broader context of the legislature to focusing on the city. And in the process of developing a legislative agenda, I wanted to explain a little bit as to how we arrived at, at the agenda that I'll be highlighting in a few moments. Generally, when we, when I'm working with clients, we advise one to three proactive items each session. This allows us to really focus on getting those priorities achieved for the city. This can include funding requests. It can be bills, whether, whether the city is taking a strong position on bills that other stakeholders have introduced in Olympia, or whether, or whether the city itself is requesting legislation. We typically advise one funding request per budget. It really helps us focus, because there's typically a limited amount per district per budget. And so we want to make sure that we're able to focus our attention on one request at a time per budget. And something I'll also add is that the legislative process is designed to significantly narrow the number of bills that- to significantly narrow the number of bills that passes each year. That is just the nature of of every legislative process. This can mean it can sometimes take a couple of years for a bill to pass. Also recommend that clients include long-term priorities on their legislative agenda in order to help the legislature look into where the city is headed. So the city can convey a vision as to where you'd like to go. And so we, we've done that on this agenda. And finally, regional priorities and/or partnerships. This is a way for the city to say, you know, this other organization, we support what they're doing, and so we support their priorities as well to add another voice into the mix. That can generally help for coalition building on particularly large budget or policy items. Next slide, please. Going to walk through now the items on the legislative agenda. The first is to is legislation to allow the city to provide sewer service to the Cowlets Tribe. We, I've been working very closely with your mayor and with the city's staff on this issue, and we've kind of gone back and forth, and and we finally landed on the fact that right now, because of the urban growth boundary, the city is not able to provide that sewer service to the Cowlets Tribe. Had conversations with one of your representatives, Representative Abarno. He's agreed to have the legislation drafted and to offer it this session. And then in conversations with the Cowlets Tribe, they've agreed to partner to support this legislation as well. We expect this legislation to be a very narrow exemption to the Growth Management Act to simply allow for partnership between the city and the tribe. This, we hope, means that it will be less controversial and that this is a one-time exemption for a unique circumstance. Next steps, just to let you know where we're going. So I, I'm waiting for the bill draft back from the Code Revisers Office. With Committee Assembly Days coming up in Olympia in a couple of weeks, it's a great opportunity for me to touch base with all of your legislators, brief them on where we are on the bill, and then begin outreach to stakeholders and legislators in the local government committee. When new legislation is introduced, it is referred to a policy committee. Based on the topic of this bill, I would expect it will go through local government. And so we want to talk to the members on on those committees in each chamber to make sure that they're aware of the bill, ask them to schedule it for a hearing, and so that we're able to hit the ground running in January once session begins. Next slide, please. And we've got two budget requests on the legislative agenda. The first is the downtown community plaza. This is a capital budget request. We are looking for four and a half million. The city is looking for four and a half million to acquire the land and construct the plaza in the new downtown area. I'll note that this is is definitely a bigger legis, a bigger budget request, particularly in light of some of the budget challenges. But we know that the legislative delegation is very supportive of the economic development plans the city has for the next few years. And so if we're able to get the four and a half million for the city to help drive further growth and and more economic development in the city, then we are are going to absolutely do our best to to try and make this happen. The next steps here is that we, I will be briefing the legislative delegation, again, using that opportunity here in December coming up, and working with staff to complete the requisite budget request forms. I also, in addition, well, I'll maybe mention this at the end, but moving on to the La Center Road Lighting, this is a transportation budget request. The, the hope is to ask for a million dollars for lighting and safety improvements on the roadway. And similar to the capital budget request, we'll be briefing the legislative delegation and completing the requisite budget request forms. I'll add that as part of my advocacy on your behalf in Olympia, I also meet with the top Democrat and Republican on each budget cabinet, and will be briefing them on this ask as well in the coming months, in addition to briefing your individual legislators. My role throughout the session will be sharing supporting documentation, checking in with your legislative delegation, and advocating on your behalf with budget leadership and encouraging your legislators to do the same. Another salute, another helpful thing that we can be doing would be looking for local community organizations who are willing to write letters of support on behalf of these funding requests. It's not absolutely necessary, but it is helpful. It's, it's a good way to remind your legislators and remind the budget cabinets that there is a lot of community support and a lot of community need behind these requests. Next slide, please. Rounding things out here, we've got a long-term priority here, which is the La Center Road Corridor. The city requires funds to make these improvements, to prepare for growth. The total request is is fairly major. It's $25 million. And but it's, it's a need that the city is going to have in the neck, in the next few years. We're not asking, we're not making a specific budget request for this at the moment. However, as I mentioned earlier, the legislature is considering or may be considering a transportation package this session. And so typically, packages fund bigger ticket items. Perhaps if there is additional, if there is space for community projects, perhaps this is considered. It isn't, this is why it's important to have a long, longer-term priority on the legislative agenda when opportunities like that come up. Finally, regional priorities and partnerships. This is a good opportunity, as I mentioned, for the city to add a voice of support to other bigger-ticket budget requests or legislative priorities. This here includes the Southwest Washington Regional Public Safety Training Academy, the Association of Washington Cities Legislative Priorities, and the Clark County Transportation Alliance's policy statement for this coming session. Next slide, please. What happens next? As I laid out for you all in a timeline, what some of the bigger agenda items are for the month of December, but right in the, in the immediate, the city should adopt your legislative agenda. We'll be briefing your legislative delegation and also talking to budget cabinet members as well. And we'll also be briefing other relevant members of the legislature regarding your priorities. This is, as I mentioned, members of the local government committee once Senate, or excuse me, once committee assignments have been, are are public and finalized. And this says, when I put together this presentation, I said that Senate Democrats must elect a new Majority Leader. The news actually on that just came this morning in that Senate Democrats just elected Senator Jamie Peterson to serve as their Majority Leader. We'll also be paying attention to committee reorganization, which is going to occur in each chamber. Bill prefiling, where we'll be, begin our tracking for the legislative session for the city and and looking at making sure that you all see the bills that are coming forward that that may be relevant to you. We'll see Governor Inslee's budget released on December 11th. Kind of a unique situation with the change of in administration in that the budget that comes out December 11th will include Governor Inslee's priorities, even though he will not be in office once the budget is realized or adopted by the legislature. So Governor Inslee will put out his, his budget, and then once Governor-elect Ferguson has an opportunity to get into his visit, get into the governor's mansion and get organized, he'll, he will share his own budgetary priorities with the legislature and will appoint his policy team. Next slide. I think that might be it. So I will wrap there. Really appreciate the opportunity to work with the city. We're looking forward to representing you all for another productive year in Olympia. I am always available if you have any questions about the process and happy to, happy to take any questions now.
Thank you, Hannah. Appreciate it. Counselor, do you have any questions for Hannah? No? I do want to say the bill that we are going for to change part of the GMA is a long process. It'll be a very public process. It's going to take a lot of work and a lot of effort on everybody's behalf. And there's no guarantee that it passes. It's something that we need to work on in order to help maintain the wastewater treatment plant as it is today. So any support or any letters to the delegation would be greatly appreciated from the counselors as well. Hannah, thank you for your hard work on this. The federal priorities will be out next week, I believe. Normally, we just put this in the consent agenda, but we wanted this to be presented to you, counsel, so you guys can see what we're working on behind the scenes. Just one more thing on top, the, the other tasks that the staff and we are working on. At this point, if there are no requests for any changes in this legislative priorities, can I get a motion to approve, counsel?
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Passes. Thank you, counsel. Thank you again, Hannah. Appreciate it. You've done a lot of great work. The city is definitely going to see some of that here come in January when we get the next million for that trail system going all the way over to Riverside Estates. So thank you again.
Awesome. Thank you. Good to see you all.
Right. Next up is the mayor's report. Want to remind everyone that the second City Council meeting this month is moved to next Wednesday due to the Thanksgiving holiday. And also, clerk, if we can put this up on the screen, please. I wanted to announce that last year, or not last year, I'd say earlier in the year, the council got together for a retreat. We sat together with the host, Erin. She was the Battleground City Manager. Now she's the manager of Kennewick, city manager out there. And we listed out a bunch of topics on sticky notes that stuck on that wall right over there. And there were gigantic sticky notes. One of them we came up with, because, and this was before Vista Vineyard and all the controversy behind that expansion or that development, came up was helping people understand how a city operates. Right? Battleground came up with their own little university, and the city council decided that they'd like to do their own. So we have constructed, or we've actually outsourced and constructed a program that'll be once a month, that's a Monday, right? Did we go for the first Monday, Maria? First Monday of every single month, and there are several different courses in here. It'll run through, from January through May. The first one's going to be on city administration, former government, OPMA, and PRA. Okay, thank you. The Februaries will be municipal finance, general funds, enterprise funds, budget processes, principles, revenues, and options, debt. Third one will be community planning, land use, building permitting, economic development. Fourth one will be public works, streets, parks, facilities, operations, utilities, stormwater, wastewater utilities provided by other entities. And the final one will be the public safety, law enforcement, municipal court, fire, EMS. I encourage you to please pass the word. We're going to put it out on the reader board. This is free to everyone. We are going to tape them. We will add them to our website so that people can actually watch these and learn how, what it takes to run a city. The decisions that go into it, the laws we have to follow, the guidance we get, and all the work that the city staff puts into it. This is going to be presented by Jeff Swanson, and I'm sure there'll be other entities or other people that'll be guests speaking and walking through with him. So please come. If you attend all five of them at the end of it, you will get a certificate of completion as well. So it's happening. What's that?
We need cap and gowns.
Cap and gowns, that's right. So counsel, your, your idea has come to fruition. Thank you. All right. Next up is the attorney's report. Janine, you with us?
I am with you, but I don't have any, any particular items to report. Just happy to be here and answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for the city attorney? I think we're good tonight, Janine. Thank you. Next up, council comments. Councilmember Casberg.
I've already said a lot of words today and early on, so I'll keep this very short. Thank you for coming, and that's all I have.
I am impressed.
I talked a lot today, so.
Wow.
I'm done.
You say that every week, and then you go on and on and on, so I wasn't sure. Thank you, Councilmember Casberg. Next up, Councilmember Boyle.
Good evening, everyone. Man, that's a hard one to follow up, but I don't really have anything too new, but thank you, guys, everybody, for coming out. Last night I attended as the alternate Citron Board, Board of Directors meeting. They voted on amending some language that has to do with the IBR, the International Bridge Project. Other than that, there wasn't a whole lot to be said during that meeting, but yeah, good to see everybody. This weather is something. Anyways, that's all I got. Cold and wet, right?
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Layoff?
For this month of November, I've really focused on just thinking about veterans and all the veterans that that died so that we could live in a free America. I attended the prayer breakfast on November 7th, and that was wonderful. There was an astronaut, Jeff Williams, that was there. Very impressive. He's written a book that's just beautiful and has many photographs in it that he took when he was in the outer space. And that evening, I attended at the Heathman event that had the first-ever Top Gun female pilot. She was very impressive, listening to her talk. She grew up in Longview. But she lives in her, in Nevada now with her husband, who's a Top Gun pilot. And then, of course, Monday was the beautiful parade in, at Fort Vancouver. And then there was an event at Pearson Museum afterwards, too. So I love that city, that Clark County really goes all out to celebrate veterans. I think that's, it's very, very special. My dad was in World War II, and my husband in the the Air Force for 30 years, and just many family and friends that that served their time. And anyone that's here that was in the service, I just thank you for, for serving your country. And be careful out on all this cold and rain and leaves everywhere. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Councilmember Serpiny.
Thank you, Mayor. And just want to thank each and every one of you for coming out in this gloomy, dark evening with the wonderful rain that have begun. And just caution everyone to be very careful and safe out there on the roads. You know, the water is rising, and we're going to have probably flooding in some of the lowlands like we always do. And with the winds, we'll have a lot of leaves and, as well as branches that are falling on the roads and unfortunately impacting you, Sean. But let's just be cautious and make sure that we take care of ourselves and our family and wish everyone a happy and safe evening.
Thank you. I didn't hear anybody say comments about the banners. We hear about Clark County, and how well they did with veterans, but I think the city of La Center deserves a big standing ovation on that because I think we do a great job here in our cities, supporting our veterans.
I did notice this.
Did you notice? We have extras in there. We got another four or five of them added. Was it five? Did we get five? We got five more, right?
We're still taking more orders.
And we're still taking more orders, and we're still waiting to put owls up. But I just, you know, I, it's amazing. The city supports its veterans like it does. You know, Clark County is following us.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Now that I get off my soapbox. We do have a staff report tonight that is Community Development and Public Works. Ms. Tracy Coleman will be presenting. Tracy?
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, so I just have a few things to discuss and for our public report this, this month. And just want to let you know, I couldn't remember if I reported this in the last month or not, but basically, our hot-mix asphalt is all done for the year. We've completed that, so we'll be starting to gather information for next year's patching. We also are preparing for the snow season. It's underway. We're getting our blades on all of our trucks, our plot set up for rock and/or sand, if we want to put that out there, or anything that we need to put out on the roads to help them for me and Slick. So we'll be working on that. to help them for me and Slick, so we'll be working on that. The community center revitalization product, the one project that we have, the money that we received for the grant dollars, the bids are due back on the 19th. We extended that date because we had a few changes that we wanted to add to that, and part of those changes were asbestos abatement. So, we added the bids. We gave them an extended date, plus we're looking at putting stainless toilets and sinks and urinals in the exterior bathrooms for damage control for graffiti, so on and so forth. So, we're looking at that, and they take a little bit longer lead item, so we have those bids due back a little later. The C Trans parking ride, where we're gonna have it six in Birch, we actually finished the ADA parking pad and the concrete sidewalk and the driveway and the aprons and the bus shelter pad. So, now what we're looking at is doing some final grading on the lot, getting a little bit of the landscaping done, and then the C Trans will be installing the bus shelter prior to them officially becoming a C Trans stop in January. So, you'll be seeing that bus shelter go up sometime, I believe, in December, early, early January. In regards to our stormwater, I thank you, council members, for speaking in regards to there's going to be a little bit of more water on the roads. What we'd like to ask you to do as citizens is make sure that if you have a drain out in front of your home, a catch basin drain, please make sure that you check that for leaves, and if you have a shovel, or just take your foot and make sure you push those leaves out of the way for the drain, so it'll continue to let that road drain. And we just ask that you pick up your leaves, and you don't put your leaves from your trees onto the streets, put them in the recycle bins that you have, and just keep them out of the streets the best that you can. So, that'll help us when we bring our street sweeper through to be able to keep the streets clean and make sure those catch basins are working to the best of their ability. In regards to our wastewater operations, all plant parameters remain well within our compliance of the NPDES permit limit, so very pleased to report on that every single month. And then, we talk about, a little bit about training. So, we just had an employee pass his wastewater operator exam, so we now have another wastewater operator one at the plant. So, what that includes is it includes training for reviewing for the test and then taking the test. So, that's what some of those dollars are spent on when we look at that. In regards to our engineering, we anticipate, we're talking about the Forest Street widening and Breezy Creek Culvert Grant. We anticipate on a completion and recording for all the right-of-way to be done by month end, and then we get to proceed with the environmental approval. Once the environmental approval's done, then we actually get to proceed with having the funds delegated to us so we can start spending that money. So, we're getting really near completion. We're on target. We're actually a little ahead of target of where we wanted to be to get the funds allocated towards us. In regards to the building department, we have Highland Terrace Phase 2, has 10 homes under construction. Case Place has two homes, and Stevens Hillside has 11 homes under construction. Lockwood Meadows has seven. Ace's View has eight homes, and then we have one home being built at Gordon Crest Phase 2. As you guys are all aware, we do have a code enforcement officer now hired on part-time for the city of La Center. With all the cases that she's closed out and new cases that have been reported, we have seven open cases currently, and she actively closes those well within the timeline that's required for code enforcement. So, I'm very, very pleased with what she's been doing in code enforcement for us. In regards to our community development activity, we have, in regards to our residential new, we have 70 applications for new residential, and we have 126 applications for other. This is year-to-date, obviously, and the other are, you know, roofs, rowing, mechanical, right-of-way, excuse me, not rowing, haha, that's funny, roofs, right-of-way, mechanical, and plumbing. And then, in regards to special permits, that would be something like solar panels, people putting in cell towers, decks, covered patios, so on and so forth. So, we have 17 of those year-to-date. As of a total, we have 213 applications that we've received year-to-date, which is significantly lower than we had last year. Last year, we had 341. So, you know, we have quite a few less development than we had last year, but that kind of gives us a total. So, if anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions? Great report there, Tracy. Thank you very much. Hope you get to fill in better.
Thank you very much, and thank you for letting me zoom in today. I appreciate that.
All right. Next up, we have a resolution. Resolution 484, Callet's Tribe Right-of-Way of Vacation. Mr. Brian Cast, are you there?
I am here. Can you guys hear me all right?
Perfect. Brian will be presenting tonight. Brian, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, counsel. Can we possibly get the exhibit to the right-of-way pulled up while I'm talking, so folks can take a look at that? So, the city has received a request to vacate around 0.47 acres of what used to be the Paradise Park Road alignment, just east of the northbound I-5 ramps. This area, in this exhibit north, is to your right. And this area, again, used to be Paradise Park before the Callets undertook the interchange improvement projects back in 2017. They reconstructed Paradise Park, curving it to the east, and then moving that intersection with La Center Road to the east as well, making this section of right-of-way no longer necessary. Back when the city and tribe were discussing this project and coming to an agreement on how the project would work, the vacation of this area was contemplated at that time, but it's just never taken place until now. And so, we're kind of just finally finished some of the last cleanups and get this process wrapped up here. So, as counsel is aware, the first step in the right-of-way vacation process is for counsel to consider passing a resolution to set a public hearing for considering this and hearing from the public. This would be done with the proposed Resolution 484, which would set the proposed meeting, or the public meeting, excuse me, on December 11th. As you recall from the last right-of-way vacation, council does have the right under state law to request compensation for the area of right-of-way vacated. However, the recommendation at this time, barring further instructions from council, would be to draft the following ordinance that will actually vacate the right-of-way to not request any compensation in recognition that the Callets did reconstruct this roadway and actually improved it, widened it, and made it better than it used to be. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions before council considers passing of this resolution.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions, counsel?
Brian, what do they plan to do with it?
They haven't shared any plans yet. I believe we did see a trust application come in on the parcels that they own just adjacent to this. So, I would assume that they may have some future plans for developing the area, including this sliver of right-of-way, but they haven't shared those with us at this time.
Does it have utilities or anything going through it?
There is overhead power in the area, so we've let them know that they will either need to have an easement remain for that overhead power, or work with Clark PUD to underground or relocate that power potentially. Water, sewer, and other utilities were relocated to the new roadway alignment, so there is no underground utilities. We had Tony take a look at that when we received this vacation request.
Does CPU have any plans in enlarging their services up there?
I believe the water line service is in the new alignment, and so that was just, you know, fairly recently constructed back with the roadway in 2017. I'm not sure on the power. We've connected the tribe with some representatives over at PUD, so they're actively discussing that right now. And when we hear the results of that, we will definitely include that in the ordinance when it comes back on December 11th.
What do, what does that piece of land cost us to maintain every year as the city?
That I am not sure. I'm not sure if Tracy maybe has some info on this. I have a feeling there's not a lot really going on. It's just sort of a grassy area. I'm not even sure if the city's mowing it, or if it's kind of just getting mowed with the adjacent properties by the tribe.
So, it's my understanding right now that we have mowed it once, but we don't put any money into it right now, except for minor, minor mowing. So, yeah, we don't, there's not a lot of money spent on that. I mean, I guess if you're gonna figure your man hours, you could figure, you know, what, $40, $40 an hour, fully loaded rate times eight hours, and figure they mow it maybe three times a year, and so, not too much, less than $1,000 bucks a year.
So, what I'm trying to look at, or... Can't get this microphone around the... The western boundary of that blue area, is that the DOT fence for the property line for the exit ramp?
It is, yeah. So, when you look at it on GIS, this right-of-way kind of blends into the I-5 right-of-way, so it's kind of hard to define. But this exhibit here, if you can really zoom in on it, it's not the best copy. We'll have a better one for the ordinance and as well as the legal description, but there, it does show that the west side is that fence that defines along the off-ramp there.
Is there any significance to the, it says city of La Center surplus right-of-way? What does the surplus right-of-way mean?
I think that was sort of their attempt to contemplate this eventual vacation of this right-of-way. You know, it's now surplus because Paradise Park has been realigned. However, you know, it is a legislative process that the council has to go through the steps to vacate, so, you know, it can't just be declared surplus like a lawnmower or something, or a piece of equipment or something like that.
Okay, thank you.
And something else I want to throw in there, too, is there is no use for us in this right-of-way except for having to maintain it, and which we rarely ever do. So, we have no benefit in having this right-of-way. We can't build on it. We can't put a park on it. We can't do anything with this right-of-way. So, it does us no good to have this right-of-way. And it's not adjacent to any of our properties or anything, so.
Tracy, what happens, or what? I guess my underlying concern here is what type of precedent does it set if we approve this as far as the compensation aspect goes with the next developer that comes before us and wishes us to follow suit with the same?
Right. I'm gonna let Brian talk a little bit about that, but from my opinion, working for the power company in the past and knowing that this is adjacent to Wash Dot right-of-way, it's kind of a unique situation where, because we wouldn't be allowed to do anything because it is adjacent to Wash Dot, so anything that would be adjacent to Wash Dot land would kind of come up in the same situation here where you can't build on it. Plus, it has transmission lines right along this. So, to have a piece of property like this, where you have a landowner that's saying, oh, you know, hey, we want you to vacate this, this is kind of a one-off. It's an unusual situation. So, I don't see where we would have, you know, a property owner in La Center itself proper, where they would be looking at transmission lines going through there up against the interstate. So, this is kind of a one-off where we would ask to do this. Brian, I'll let you kind of talk a little bit more about that as well.
Yeah, sure. No, I think you're right. This is a unique one, and another piece that makes it unique is that the person that is, or the entity that's requested this vacation reconstructed the roadway. State law, you know, it says that the council may, doesn't require the council to, so I don't believe that it would set any precedent, and maybe Janine might have some other thoughts, but I think in this, this is a case with enough unique situations, and we're following the state law of, you know, the may at the council's option require this compensation.
This is also a piece of property that was brought up in the 2016 IGA, or 2017, 2016, I think it was. And the tribe was told that the city would do it, and it did not follow through at that time. And when we did the new IGA, they actually wanted to put it in there, but by law, we couldn't do that. It had to be separated like this. But this is us going back and finishing something, apparently, that we had told them we would years ago. So they say, yeah. Attorneys.
But they've changed since then.
Everybody's changed since then.
Exactly.
I'm happy to weigh in if you would like.
Yeah, and we now have Bill back in there, too, right? So, and I don't know what their plans are to do with the road. Last I heard, before the changeover in their council, was a Starbucks in that area. Everything's off the table now, because there's a whole change of council.
What I look at is that's a prime parcel that they could put another large neon sign on. And is that what we want on this side of the interstate?
That's a good point.
But we can't put a Starbucks?
We can't even use that.
We can't use it at all, but the Callets can.
I'm not sure how that would work. I think that they would either have to negotiate something with lines for power, or, and they still only can go so far up to the freeway anyways. Janine, you had a comment? Janine?
Oh, yes, I wasn't sure. Sorry. So, I just wanted to weigh in here really quickly. Usually, when they're kind of associated with a road construction project, and these are the remnants, it's called, that it's not uncommon to not require compensation for that. So, I just wanted to confirm what Mr. Cast was saying, that that's not uncommon. It's also, while they sent an email kind of requesting this pursuant to some prior discussions, I consider this very much along the lines of a city-initiated request, and so, that's another circumstance where charging the compensation back to them would just not make sense in this circumstance. So, legally, you have the authority to do it. I think it is staff's recommendation not to do it for those reasons. And then, as to their use of the property and what they can do with that, I think that would just depend on what the underlying zoning is, and then the conditions of the easement. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that I can.
But if they've taken into trust, it doesn't fall under?
Well, they still can only build up to a certain point regardless, right? You can't put something right up next to the off-ramp.
Not so much that, but as far as signage and...
Right, right. We wouldn't have any say-so. Nor would the county. Nobody would have any say-so. It'd be their property, so.
Right. That's the point.
I mean, if nothing else, they can even put a big sign right next to the property, too, at that point. We couldn't say anything either. Any other questions or comments, concerns? Thoughts?
I guess I have a thought that do we have to do this?
No, no, this is up to the council.
We don't have, we can just leave it like it is and mow it three times a year.
Yes.
Well, that would be my question, is if we didn't do this, or we decided we wanted compensation, and they said, no, thanks, what, could that increase our workload, liability, expenses on that piece of property?
Well, if we're only doing it three times a year, I don't see...
I'm asking if that would change based on whatever they develop there on their part of the land.
Tracy?
Well, it would. So, if we decided like, no, we're not gonna vacate this, I will tell you right now that the help that we get from the tribe in that area would not, I don't think they would want to help us anymore. We decide not to vacate this. I mean, I think we would increase our liability as far as being able to maintain that, because right now, it's kind of a shared, you know, we kind of do it together. We go up there when we can. They do it for the most part. So, we're doing it just a few times a year, but we say, yeah, we're not gonna do that. It may become a burden on us. I'm not gonna say it's going to be, but there's a possibility. Something else I want to share, too, and, you know, if it's in our jurisdiction, and what we would have jurisdiction over is the sign code, you know, being allowed, what could be allowed up there as far as the sign goes, and I think Brian could speak to that as well. being allowed, what could be allowed up there as far as the sign goes. And I, I think Brian could speak to that as well because we're in the midst of kind of changing our sign code anyway. But that would be something that I would see that would be favorable. So there, you know, it could go either way. But also, you know, I, I look at too, who we're vacating it to, and it's being vacated to the tribe. So those are things that I like to look at too, as far as working relationships and, and really what is the value of that land to us and, and versus what, what it could be valued for in, in future consideration. So I look at options like that as well. But anyway, it's just a thought.
Yeah, you guys aren't being forced to do this. This is definitely something.
No, I'm just thinking about what, what makes, what makes the most sense, not trying to dig too deep into it. You know, the, a concern that I would have is if we, if we don't vacate this, we decide we want to keep it in the city inventory. Obviously we have to then maintain it. Well, if they put in a buildings on their land, and so we've got a chunk of empty ground between the rear of their buildings and the freeway fence line, those are prime spots for transients to start setting up camps. And all of that garbage, all of those problems that come with that would remain our responsibility. The sheriff's office would have to respond out there. Our city sheriff's office deputies would have to respond out there to deal with issues. And any of the cleanup that would occur because of that would be at our expense. And it wouldn't take very much of that because it's extremely expensive to clean those camps up. It would not take very long at all before we far exceeded the, the dollar value of that, of that property, I think. So.
Council member, I would like to, I would like to piggyback on your comment. That is 100% correct. And just last week, I actually had to call our sheriff's office and have two transients moved off that site. When I went up there to meet with the minute mark, when we were looking at a location of our city sign. There were two RVs parked up there and I had to call the sheriff's office to go have them moved. So that is a good point that I didn't even bring up. So thank you for bringing that up, being the background that you have. Because I didn't even think about mentioning that there that I have been doing that. So thank you.
Nope. My in-laws had a camp on their private property here just a few months ago, which is right directly behind Eisenhower Elementary School on, on Northwest 9th Avenue and 99th Street roughly. And it, it cost, there was a couple of tents, a bunch of garbage, but it was about $12,000 to have a company come in and, and clean up all of that abandoned junk. Plus there was a, an additional huge expense to clean up the, you know, mow, remove all of the brush and things like that. So like I said, if, if a half acre at the, at the junction is worth a hundred thousand, it's really not going to take long by the time you add in all of the expenses for staff and, and everything else to deal with that. So that's what's going through my mind.
What is the value of that land, Tracy? Do you know, or Brian?
Well, we haven't had a formal appraisal done, but you could look at the valuation of the right of way that was recently vacated up by the minute management site to kind of get a rough idea. And I think it's also worth mentioning that, you know, if, even if it's, you know, appraised at, you know, 15, $20 a square foot like that was, was over at the minute site. There is a deduction that comes along with it because there's an easement remaining there for the utilities. So I don't have an exact number in front of me. We could do a quick calculation here and have some information at the next presentation.
Do you have a rough idea?
Um, I mean, based on the last one, I'm thinking we'd probably be somewhere in the, you know, 70 to $80,000 range is my gut feel.
And you said there is a utility easement within that right of way?
Well, right now it's right of way, but that would be one of the conditions is that there's an easement for utilities that remain over the area.
Well, I, I see bigger problems developing out of this than, than if we, than if we get rid of it. And I, and I think that there's enough development needs at the junction now that some goodwill will go a long ways. Because those roads are, have already been accepted into the tribe's inventory for, what do they call that?
Tribal road inventory.
The road inventory for, basically they can get, they can get a federal funding easier than we can to, to make repairs.
Yes, that is correct.
I'm ready to make a motion if anybody else has any other questions.
Those are, that, those are good points that you brought up that I hadn't even thought of. So.
I mean, as it looks to me, it seems like it's an unbuildable, unusable piece of property that we're just, I don't think that would affect even if they did want to put a sign on there. I mean, there's certain clearances that they'd have to have with the overhead power lines that are there. But other than that, I don't really think that, that the extent of that property would affect any, any of their building that they would plan to do there. So.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution 484 to set public hearing on the vacation of a portion of Paradise Park Road for December 11th, 2024. And I would just add that maybe some of the, some of the questions that we brought up could be addressed prior to that meeting. As far as, you know, the value and, and whatever else we were talking about, I can't remember now, those things.
Any second.
It's been moved in second. This is a resolution. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Upstain? Thank you. Thank you, council. Good points, good questions, good conversation. All right. Brian and Tracy, you got your work cut out for you. If you can go back and listen to the recordings so that we can get some of these questions for the next, next presentation in December, I'd appreciate it.
I think it was rough maintenance cost, value of the land versus, you know, the, the needs of the junction and other places.
Right.
We can utilize other resources for.
Brian, thank you for that presentation. Good job.
Talk to you later.
Enjoy Puerto Rico. Next up is ordinance 2024 dash 14 at Valerium Taxes. Ms. Maria Swinger Enskeep will be presenting. Maria?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight we will be holding a public hearing on the revenue sources, which is required by RCW 84 dot 55 dot 120 prior to passing the 2025 property tax levy. For the schedule, we will also have a public hearing at the November 20th council meeting next week for the budget adoption. And the proposed budget is posted on the city's website and has been sent to council. And Riley is also on via Zoom if you have any additional questions. So in front of you, you see the general fund revenue analysis for 2025. We have increased our property tax revenue to $755,000, which is a $64,000 increase over last year. We will have an increase in utility excise tax that is based upon new homes that are coming in. And we have increased our sales and use tax to $61,7875 a month for an estimated $742,000 for the year. And that is based on what we have seen come in this year. Our card room revenue is estimated at $128,000 a month totaling $1.535 million for the year. And then we anticipate license and permits to be a little bit lower this year. And we are currently anticipating $30,000 in grant revenue. That is for the National Endowment for the Arts that we applied for earlier this year. We are cur, we have received an offer. So we're in the offer stage for that. We are finalizing some paperwork before they actually say that we have the award. And so that is just something that we have just received in the past couple of weeks. And so that was not in any prior presentation. On the expense side, we'll discuss expenses next week, but I do want to point out where that shows up at. And that will show up in the parks budget. It's, it shows up as $60,000 as it is a match. However, we can use in-kind donations, labor, outside labor that comes in, artists that come to paint, whatever. We can use that as the match. So it, it's not going to be $30,000 out of pocket, hopefully. But we did put that in the budget for next year, but we can, we'll discuss that next week if you have any questions on that. The total general fund revenue is 4.47 million dollars. In addition, we have the transfer from the city's utility tax of, I'm sorry, the city's sewer utility of $400,000. So that makes a total revenue in our general fund of 4.874 million dollars. So we are going to scroll down to our property tax levy. So I can explain that. So the assessed value that we have up there is as of January 1st of 2024. Last year's assessed value was $851,000, 635,134. And then this year's assessed value is 953,816,4714. I told Riley that next year we're going to pass the $1 billion mark in value in the city. That's just such a huge number. The value appreciation is just over $31.1 million or a 3.7% increase, which is kind of odd. If you remember, the population increase was like 3.7 or 3.8%. So it's odd that it correlated there. The 2024 new construction assessed value is 70,827,151, which is an 8.3% increase. And the increase for annexation this year is $183,670. And that was for the Barnhart annexation. It actually happened last year, but we weren't able to count it yet. So it's counted into this. And then the state assessed utility infrastructure value is still to be determined. So we are using last year's numbers per the guidance of the assessors office. The current levy is $690,400. And so a 1% increase, which we'll be requesting tonight is the $6,904. The new construction levy increase is $57,418. And there is the $149 increase for the annexation. So the new rate is $754,870 divided by the total assessed value. And you get a tax levy of 79 cents, which is under last year's levy rate, which was 81 cents. And then for reference, two years ago, it was 84 cents. So the rate does keep decreasing. And then we will scroll down just right below where it says the sewer and the stormwater utilities. And there is no increase in sewer rates for the 10th year in a row. It will remain at $66 a month. And I will note that we are doing a sewer study as, as likes to say, we are doing our due diligence and we, that is subject to change. And so at the time of passing this budget, there are no known rate changes, but just know that that could change next year when that, that study is finalized. And the new development and the rate will create enough revenue for the debt repayment that we do on the sewer fund. And then stormwater maintenance fee will continue at $10.60 a month. And it's the third year that it has not increased since its inception in 2019. So I will turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Maria. Great presentation. Any questions for Maria?
Yeah, just to be clear. So you're saying that the rate per thousand dollars of value has decreased from 84 cents to 81 cents to 79 cents. Right. Okay.
Casey, you asked this question last year, so I was prepared. So it is, it's a decrease of the amount of the levy because it's 79 cents. But it's an increase because the assessed value has gone up.
Right. Okay. That's what I was.
Hey, you have a great memory.
I don't remember if I, I don't remember asking that.
I, I listened to the meeting again. You keep me on my, you keep me on my toes.
Thank you for that.
Did she answer that question, Priya?
Yeah.
All right.
It's probably the same answer I gave last year too.
Any other?
She says, yeah, you should have known that from last year.
No, 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 no. We've slept since then.
Any other questions for Maria? Comments, concerns? Okay, at this time, 7:54, I'd like to open it up to the public here or to the public. Are there any public comments from the audience? Al? Please state your name and address for the record and please stick to the ordinance at hand. Thank you.
Al Phillips, 36016 Northwest Jenny Creek Road. Now, if you vote against this, vote it down. You know, that's six, it's only 6,600, $6,600?
6,900.
$6,900. That, you know, do we really need $6,900? But bear in mind, you're not going to get that $6,900 every year from now on. You know, so thank you. God bless America.
Thank you, Al. Any other comments from the audience? Any comments from anyone calling in? Please press star six to unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record, and please stick to the ordinance.
Hi, Kimberly Goheinelba, can you hear me?
Yes, Kimberly, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to get on my phone here and look at this. So are we on the call list or all three of these ordinances?
Just ordinance 2024 dash 14, the taxes.
Okay, so listen, Clark County is devising a way, they've been working on it to get more taxes. They're going to call it levy. They're going to call it taxes. They're going to call it fees. In my opinion, as I've seen through the years, hard-earned tax dollars going through the government. In my opinion, this is how government gets big, big, big. The bigger the government, the more they rule over the people instead of the other way around. They're to serve what we want. That's why I'm asking for a town hall for growth. I want people to know that they have a choice to either grow or not grow. And, and I believe that is our choice. So back to Clark County, they are taxing, as I've mentioned before, they're going to try to get Uber Eats, anything you buy on Amazon or through FedEx. They're going to try to get that because they don't like people going over to Oregon and buying as a free people and not getting that sales tax revenue. In my opinion, again, they've been spending millions of hard-earned tax dollars through themselves, building up themselves and their entities, such as the police department or the fire department and the EMTs. Okay, I get that. Except there's more money being spent with the higher up. But now we have to pass levies for those that actually put their life on the line, took an oath to protect you, using your hard-earned tax dollars to protect you. That's why all these taxes, they're frantic now because they've used all this hard-earned tax dollars that the American Rescrew Plan that Biden put out. And we've got a $37 trillion deficit. And here again, we're going to be building homes and this and that. I, I speak at Clark County all the time. We have got to stop the growth. It's population pollution. We don't have the resources anymore and people don't, don't know it. But I do know this, our local grassroots government does know what's going on. You guys know, Clark County knows, you're riding a big wave of hard-earned tax dollars that's going to crash. They need people to pay attention to that to the future. We, we really don't need a new big downtown. We don't need any more taxes. We don't need our, certainly our property taxes raised, which are, which is going to happen. Our utilities, our sewer, everything is being raised again at the hard-earned tax dollar expense.
Thank you, Kimberly. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other callers calling in? Please press star six to unmute yourselves, state your name and address for the record, and please stick to the ordinance. Any other callers calling in, please press star six to unmute yourselves, state your name and address for the record, and please stick to the ordinance. Clerk, are there any public comments to be read?
There are no public comments to be read.
Okay, at this time, 7:59, I'd like to close the public hearing and turn it back over to counsel. Counsel, any questions, comments, concerns, conversations?
Yeah, I think I have a new one. And if, and if it is something I asked last year, maybe there's some new faces out here that might want to know the answer, too. So that, that $6,904 all stays in the city?
Yes, it does. And that is spread out amongst all of the residences in the city. So it's a very small increase.
Okay. Thanks.
Anymore?
No.
Okay, you're cut off. Myrna Liz?
I still have minutes from my council time to use. Roll over minutes.
Any conversations? Oh, can I get a motion?
I'll do it. Mayor, I move to approve. Can't see it all the way up there. Mayor, I move to approve Ordinance 2024-14 establishing the ad valorem taxes necessary to finance anticipated requirements of the City of La Center, Washington for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025 by increasing probably tax revenue from the previous year by 1%.
Second. It's been moved in second. Clerk, this is an ordinance. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Fox?
She's absent excuse, I'm so sorry.
Councilmember Casper?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyle?
Yes.
Councilmember Leah?
Yes.
Councilmember Servini?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you, Maria. Great, great presentation. Good work. Very good work. You and your team are doing great work this year. All right, we do have another ordinance. This is a first look. This is Ordinance 2024-11, the TDS franchise agreement. Ms. Janine Parker will be presenting. Janine, are you with us?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
All right. Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so generally, the city only has one reading for ordinances, but there's a special statute concerning franchises that states that you have to have a, it has to be presented to the council at least five days before it's finally adopted by the council. So it's a weird little anomaly in the ordinances that are, that require this first touch, as it were. So we're presenting this to you in, in draft form, and the intent is to bring it back to the city council for final adoption at your next meeting. And this is an ordinance that actually renews a franchise with TDS Telecom. The city staff have been working with the staff of TDS for several months now, just kind of going back and forth on terms. Generally, the agreement is renewed. As it, well, let me rephrase that. Generally, there are not any significant changes to the renewal. The renewal just reenacts the, the provisions that have been in effect for a number of years. And you can see from the preamble to the ordinances that this has been in effect in La Center for quite some time. Both my review and that of staff are that the ordinance is fairly protective of the city as far as franchises go. There was some negotiation in the agreement concerning their facility, which is not in the right-of-way, but we were able to negotiate a new provision in this ordinance. And I believe it's section, give me one second here, 5H. And that they are going to do some particular repairs to their, to their existing facility that have been coordinated with staff. So that's what took a little bit of extra time to, to negotiate. So this is a franchise renewal. It is for a period of five years, and it is generally on the same terms and conditions that have been in effect for a number of years for this franchise. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. And then we can get this on the agenda for your next meeting for adoption, if that is counsel's wish.
Thank you, Janine. When she was talking about the improvements, this building that sits right out here kitty-corner to City Hall, that's the building we're talking about. And Tracy and myself, Tracy looked over the franchise agreement, said it was a great agreement. She's dealt with them from her past job. And then what we asked for was paint and sprucing up the building a little bit. Make it look more presentable to the city of La Center and to the residents, so it's not such an eyesore. It took a little bit of finagling, maybe a little bit of arm twisting, but they finally came around and said yes, they would get it done sometime in 2025. Was it like third quarter, Janine? Something like that?
Yes, I think, I think September was the date that ended up being in the agreement.
So we, we.
It's actually June, June, and they're probably going to have it done by March.
There you go.
There you go. So do you guys have any, counsel, do you have any questions for Janine or Tracy on this one?
Well, if, if we don't renew this, what, then what happens?
So as a telecom facility, they have the, the rights to be in your right-of-way on the same general terms and conditions as you allow other telecoms to be in your, in your right-of-way. So there could be some liability if you deny it outright, and particularly, you know, since it's been in effect for so long. And if there's issues within it that you don't like, or that, that have become an issue for the city, you can certainly direct us to go back and kind of renegotiate those. But I would expect that we would need a, a, a forecause reason, a, a significant reason to be able to deny it outright, if that makes sense.
Also, we do receive tax money from them, from TDS, and so we would, if, you know, if they stopped operating here, then we would not receive that money.
But then would, I don't even know who the phone companies are anymore. Who else has landlines?
I think they provide internet services as well.
Well, yeah, they do.
It's, it's another option for the residents, right? It's not just Comcast.
Yeah, and I mean, with, with wireless and everything else, there's, there's other options for people now, anyway. I, I'm just curious, you know, you see people complaining about TDS on, on the internet, and people complain about everything on the internet. So I don't know whether there's any truth to it or, or not, but it, if there was another provider, would that create competition, which may lower rates? Or that's kind of what I'm getting at.
So, so yes, the, the issue is, though, you have to provide it to all providers on the same basis. So you can't treat one dramatically different from another. And so I don't know if these are the only guys in town in La Center, but certainly if anybody else were to come in, that we would, we would want to, to have a similar franchise or have similar terms that govern the franchise. The other thing is if there, I, I don't know the nature of the complaints, but if there are issues that, that we could address in the franchise agreement, maybe that would be an option. If, for example, not, not telecom, but in our, not our, but in Comcast franchises, it's not uncommon to have some regulations that govern, you know, some of their, some of the, what, what services they're providing in the city and those things. So I, I've not seen those very often, but, but arguably, you could probably come up with some language that would address those.
Yeah, no, I, and I'm not saying there's any validity to those, to those complaints, or that TDS doesn't respond to those. I, I don't know the answers to those. So I was just curious more about the competition and exclusivity of.
One thing that we did require that kind of goes to that, and that the Mayor Strobin had, had specifically asked if there be a local contract, contact, so that we were not in a position of not be, you know, being put into the TDS bureaucracy and not being able to get an answer to our questions, or not being able to raise these things. So you will see in the agreement, there is a, a local, a local contact. And I'm, I'm trying to find that. Oh, that is section 5A. There is actually a local agent contact for TDS. So I think that might help also if we get specific complaints. We can now have a local contact to try to get those resolved.
So the agreement doesn't stop other entities from coming in and offering competing services. It also, what we can't do is say, well, I mean, if the services aren't that great, then you just can't do that, you know, the residents or anything like that. So we can't, we can't control the quality of their services. That, that's controlled by the public with, when they disconnect or shut off their services.
Yeah, no, competing, competing services was what I was getting at. That's a much better way of putting it than I did. So thank you. Okay.
And by local contact person, you mean someone in Clark County or the state of Washington? Because I see these other contact people are in Madison, Wisconsin.
You want a local, La Center.
I, I see that. I apologize. I had thought, I understood they were going to provide a name with, with somebody locally in, in our area, southwest Washington.
Yeah, they are. And I actually, I actually have two local contacts for the area, so we can get that updated for when it comes back next time. But I also want to share that the franchise agreement, when I read this, this is what I did for six years for Pacificor for six states. I wrote and did the franchise agreements and negotiated with the inner, the cities within six states for all of our streetlights and our utility pools. So when I read this, I wanted to read it, and I was pleasantly surprised at how this franchise agreement was almost written for our, our full benefit. And I believe Janine was in agreement when she read it, too. We were shocked at how the agreement was for us and not for them. It was almost like, who wrote this and where did they come from? So I was very surprised at the agreement. And to throw in for them to do the building and to give us a local contact is above and beyond. They didn't have to do the building. I think they're really trying to work with us, and I, I was very pleasantly surprised by the agreement. So I just want to share with you that it's just for them to go in our right-of-way, but our right-of-way is for anybody to go into. Anybody can fill out a right-of-way permit and be in our right-of-way. This is just, this is just asking that, that they can go in there and have an agreement with us, and we're getting something extra out of it. So I see no, I see personally no reason why we wouldn't want to sign this. It doesn't make them exclusive to the City of La Center. It just helps us with being able to negotiate with them. And really, this, this agreement is written to our benefit. I, I think, Janine, you agree with that.
Yeah, usually you have to fight tooth and nail to get terms like undergrounding and, you know, the permitting requirements and, and some of the other things that were, you know, usually things that I am trying to negotiate to, to get into an agreement. When I read it, it was, it was already there. So, so I agree.
My questions have been answered. Thank you.
Yeah, as you know, this is a first look. So if you have any questions, this is a good time to do it. They will be bringing this back, guys, at next week? Next week? Yeah, it'll be on next week's agenda. Any further questions for Janine or Tracy? Any direction? Or are you guys okay with it coming back as is?
I'm fine as is. I, I've been educated and my questions are answered, so.
It seems like we've made improvements to a long-term agreement that's been going on for years, so I think it looks good.
We'll, we'll update it with the local contact in there, too. We'll make sure that gets in there.
Perfect. All right. Thank you, Janine. Thank you, Tracy. Appreciate it. Thank you, counsel. You'll see it presented next week. Counsel, is there any unfinished business?
No.
How about any new business?
No. Depends on if Casey has anything else to say.
Nope.
You sure? All right. Can I get a motion to close the meeting? It's been moved in second.
Was there going to be a public hearing on this franchise?
Next week, Kimberly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah, next Wednesday night. It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Appreciate it. Motion, or meeting's closed. We are.